To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you all planning to attend the planning board meeting on the second at 6:00? Because the planning board is likely to return.
Thursday?
Yes.
Six, okay.
That's at 6:00 and it's regarding ordinances. Oh. The, okay, you guys have or may have mentioned that this meeting on the premises, you need to write a policy on that as well. Just so we have it in the books. Okay, and as far as the town report, you need to decide who you want to dedicate the report to this year. We talked a little bit about last week, I think, but you guys come up with, um... We had mentioned... Did you have, did anybody have any ideas?
We did, I have it somewhere in my minutes, let me find them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they were in my notes.
Sorry?
All right, so last time we talked about, we were looking for someone, so first thing, if anybody else, we thought maybe, um...
What about Tom Potter?
We thought about Ronnie Moraine and then we thought about, um, let's see.
Tom Potter, that's right.
Tom Potter, yeah.
He was a selectman.
We put Ronnie Moraine and then we said something about, um, oh, and the cover, we talked about the stump down the road for the cover.
The stump down the road?
You know, the one that's all carved out?
Oh, yeah.
The stump, I mean it like that, but...
Yes, that, that's pretty.
Yeah, that is nice.
So called Wood Sculpture, does that sound better?
Tree sculpture.
Instead of a stone?
Totem, is it a totem?
Oh, okay. Okay, so you did talk about that in your report. I need the report from the board.
We didn't make any decisions, but I think, um, can we, you know, can we dedicate it to two? You want to dedicate it to two?
We have.
We have, we have.
I don't care. Do your votes, selectmen?
Last year it was two people and I think we've done it a couple times for two people.
Mrs. Wilson.
I have to wait for the chairman.
So if you, you know, I mean, think about that, if that's what you want to do. It's like, I don't think it's a bad idea, you know, they're both not paying.
Yes?
Yes, Nancy Wyman was also mentioned as a possibility as well.
Yes, it was. Well, we were talking about the, um, way back because the 25th anniversary, yes, who else, all the work she does.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll talk about it next week. Did anybody, did you have any other suggestions for the cover?
I really, I didn't, I really don't, um...
No, I...
How about you guys?
I like that stump.
It's beautiful.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the hardest thing in town right now. Probably ought to do, people will be going by and recognizing it.
We'd probably have to ask them.
That's still, that's still Lovely's down there, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. A lot of the family is still living there.
Yeah. Yeah, so we did talk about, um, the cover to, you know, we did kind of talk about the 250th, um, too, so I didn't know if we want to go down that road and make it the, well, actually, you wouldn't next, you would do it for next year's report because this is actually a year behind.
Right.
So it wouldn't go on this year's report anyways, it'd go on next year's report, so...
So do one of you want to talk, go ask them if they mind if we take a picture and put it on the cover?
I will.
Okay.
Mrs. Lovely still lives there. Mrs. Lovely still lives there, so I'm not sure, ask her who did it, but let her know who carved it and who painted it, I really...
It's a young woman.
Do this now.
Who has got to talk to her?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll stop and ask about it?
Yeah. That would be nice.
Very talented person.
Okay. And I'm sure you're already working on the report to go in from the board.
Yeah.
All right, good. Okay, so I have a... ...adatement request here. And... There is a note on there from Ben, saying they may be eligible for poverty. So that's going to be attached to the letter to be sent out. Oh, great, thanks. Okay. I've got another one. This is, um, granted and those three places you guys all have to sign. And this is another one that was denied, so if you know, just look it up. He's coming, that's 4:00.
Those are the two ones, one needs to be signed.
Yes.
Sue, didn't you say we couldn't do anything with this one because of ownership?
No, we got it spreaded out. What happened was, he said in the panel, yeah, no, that one's fine now because what happened was is the D that came was for twelve pieces and I thought it was only for one. Peter came in and talked to me. One more page, I just want to fill it in. One more page, I just want to fill it in. Excuse me.
Come on, hit it.
I can close my eyes and just...
That's what it does to you, one of the many things. Gets some real good feelings in your belly, too.
All right.
That's fine, it's, it's all over within a few days.
Hope so. I don't have time.
Goes away quick, when it goes.
I'll leave the signature on page two. Okay, this is, um, some minutes. I got this email from Norm Turgeon last week, it came in, and I made a copy for you guys about the NIAID. Did you all see it?
Where did it go?
It came in Thursday.
I have not seen it yet, it's probably in my pile.
Have either of you guys seen it? I forwarded it to you once I printed it.
Just scanned it a little bit.
Okay, so what it, he's asking, it's, um, it says, via the attached document, Amy Smagula provided the following estimates for European NIAID control in 2017, and it lists some amounts for the herbicide and the diver dash work. Does that sound familiar? Okay. So she, it was asked just to pass it on to you guys, so I didn't know. Okay, so this was the meeting, is this the meeting that you had over in Milton?
Yeah.
On the 23rd? Oh, okay. So is this something that's supposed to go on the, on the ballot? It says, the reason townspeople should vote in favor of these appropriations. So, okay, so that's something that I'm going to have to work out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sue, is this the thing?
Yes. I just got a couple things for, um, may I say, she comes in. So I've been getting stuff for the town report situated and, um, I'm still waiting on a few things, but... Excuse me.
Well, I have, um, some information that we were waiting for. I had Jordan email MMA in Sue's absence about the scholarship, remember how we had that question of the scholarship and being able to, to, remember how conservation wanted to have a scholarship in their budget? So I had him email MMA legal and she emailed back, she wrote, "I think a scholarship fund is an authorized municipal expenditure and the town could authorize the board of selectmen to appropriate money to the conservation committee for purposes of awarding a scholarship. However, as with any municipal expenditure, the town would need to vote to authorize the development of the scholarship fund. Also, the scholarship would need to serve a public purpose, which it would, and that purchase, and in that purpose, along with the eligibility criteria and the scholarship amount in the process for selecting recipients, who would need to be made clear to the public, the warrant article for vote to authorize a scholarship should provide this detail. Let me know if you'd like any assistance with the warrant article language, so she's happy to help at MMA." Um, so I don't know if we want to give this just to conservation committee and have them, um, read through this and...
You've got to take the money out of the budget somewhere.
Well, but they have to create a scholarship.
It's fine for having their own setup, but...
You have to create a fund.
Yes. So I don't know if they want to, well, the town would need to vote on a scholarship fund before that they could even appropriate the money. So I mean, I can ask her for literature or make it one question, if at all possible, to do it that way, uh, she, she's more than helpful to, I mean, more than willing to...
Sure, it's also better to find out what part of this town budget that money would be coming from. Does it come out of conservation, does it come out of something else?
Well, it would come out of conservation.
And go to conservation.
No, it would come out of conservation, but we have to, you know, create that fund.
Then there would have to be money added to their budget.
Well, they already did, they asked us, they put it in their budget, the conservation budget. They, they already want to do it, it's just that we needed the legal part of that to make sure we do it correctly. Um, so do you want me to have them email her again and ask her for literature on how to write that article?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
I think that's probably a good idea, that way they can still go forward, because I think it's a great thing to have them have a scholarship for someone.
Yep.
In conservation.
In conservation, that's local, so I think, um, she could help us. She said, you know, the warrant article for the vote, not that her scholarship would provide detail. She said, "Let me know if you'd like any assistance with the warrant article, she'd be happy to help us," so... So I don't know if, if we can do it in one time, if we have to do it twice, like if they have to vote separately, those are the questions we'll have to ask her, if they have to vote first to, to create the scholarship fund and then vote second to, um, put it in the budget. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what question they have to ask her.
Somehow it's written.
Yeah, it probably is, absolutely, so, yeah, sure. Dan?
Yeah, sorry, I actually made a couple of calls myself and I talked to, um, a lady at the Maine Office of Community Development about this very thing and she gave me a very similar answer to yours. She suggested that you take the scholarship and make it a separate warrant article from the conservation commission budget, but you can make the scholarship and appropriate funds to it if it's separate from their budget, if it's included in their budget.
And that's one of the questions we'll ask MMA is, make it separately, that way if they don't want it, then they don't, you can't use it for that, but yes, absolutely.
Yeah, but that was what, that was the information I was coming in with you, for you today, was that, um, the, what is the name, Office of Community Development said that, um, it should be separate from their budget because it's not, you know, if people approved it in their budget and then didn't approve a fund, you'd be kind of stuck out high and dry.
Yeah, and I'm sure MMA legal will tell us that, too. I mean, you know, they'll, they'll let us know. Um, I'll have Jordan, because he's already corresponded with them, ask her, um, for language and if it needs to be separate. We now only get bills from Bernstein and Shaw through, he emails Jordan, so I have, you want to review their bill? He hasn't put it in the thing yet, he wants to give them to us to review first, um, then he'll put it in so we can review it again and something, but they don't mail them anymore. They do, we would there mail them now, so they just email them. They go paperless, apparently, until we have to print it, how does that work?
How are they going to throw the book at somebody if it's not made of paper?
That's a good question, though.
Okay, did you see Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll give that to you after we do that.
I think you've got one, two public questions, maybe you want to try and get them all over the table.
I do.
Right, I know John here has got something wanting to bring up for the board, I guess that is what it is.
Oh, I guess, yeah, that's fine. I was just shuffling papers, John, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were here to talk to us.
Uh, yeah, you know, my concern was, I had gone to the dump now twice last week and I know we've hired a bunch of help, extra help.
No, we don't have extra help. We have four employees up there.
Um, yeah, but when you go in there, you should not have to ask for help to unload your dump. There's, they should be just standing there beside, inside the thing, just pushing the button. Someone should be out at least offering to help unload, because I went in there with the, the fire department's vehicle loaded, no one even bothered coming out and asked, asked me if I needed assistance. I went in there Saturday with my truck full of stuff, no one asked me to come, even come out of the little room to ask for us if I needed assistance. There's been numerous occasions where they, you go there and there's no one, no one outside.
Okay, we can have a conversation with them, we'll see what's happening because we haven't, I haven't talked to them, we should, you know, we should, yeah, yeah.
That was my only concern because I mean, I know there is elderly people here that, now people shouldn't have to ask for help to unload their vehicle, they should be the service that there's, help supply the town. That was my only concern.
Yeah, no, we can, we'll talk about, I mean, they, you know, we'll have a conversation, yeah, perfect, thank you. It's quiet in here, so... All right, I'm going to just do this real quick. So Sue, do you have to, um...
Was that public participation for the day or are you going to do it again later?
I just want to make sure. Because you guys will adjourn it, you guys will adjourn the meeting at the end and I won't ask, I can't be able to tell you my information here.
You want to get some water out of the way, you thinking?
No, I'm just trying to get paperwork up some like that first and then, um... I'll wait till I don't have one.
Seems like the temperature is staying more even in the whole place now?
Much better. Jason called. Did he come and work on it? He did, didn't he?
Oh, yeah.
Done it.
Sorry, I didn't get to see it. Did he clean it and whatever?
He doesn't clean it.
No, he said he'll be in, um...
He didn't have time.
He may stop this week and try to do it, but he'll be there next week.
Wanted to get a look.
It's the heat.
This is just a letter from the town Elliot, they're going to be conducting a comprehensive 2017 benefit and salary survey, so they'll be sending us, um, a packet if we want to do the survey for them, I don't know what they're up to, but, um, you are required to write each comparable positions, they're just looking for a survey. I think they don't want to use frustrating or something out there.
Well, that's probably what's what we pay for different positions.
Yeah, different positions and stuff, we'll get that, so I'm going to get that for them. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, we'll work on that, I'll get that. Okay, uh, do you have a question?
I'll wait. It was just, sorry.
No, that's fine, if you want to, if you want to, go ahead.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Number one is, we were looking into that um county growth tax uh and the board had gone ahead and given us two, a couple of days to work on that and I was wondering how that uh came out.
That, that, remember way back when we were doing that?
No, not a, not way back when, just a month, just about a month ago, just before Christmas.
And I didn't, no, I haven't called him, I haven't gotten it done.
Okay, uh the other thing was, like I told you, I had called this uh Maine Office for Community Development and I was talking to them about the two things, the scholarship uh and also the um Historical Society. So, in an effort to try to figure out a way to do that better, um I talked to them and they said that you can actually put a warrant article on uh the ballot for the Historical Society. However, it has to be disclosed that the Town Finance Office and Budget Committee have no accessibility uh over those funds and also identify that the society has no uh responsibility to return the profits from that entity to the town. It has to be completely disclosed if you put it on a warrant article. If you put it on the um other services article where like the Red Cross and stuff is, like I had discussed with you, you don't have to make that disclosure, it's assumed, is what they told me. So, you can do it either way, but um but there's certain ways to do each thing of it. And um the uh, the final thing that I wanted to talk to you about is that um I had talked to John about going down to the um transfer station and I told him that I would speak to you about that as well because um Gary went down there on Saturday and there was an elderly lady that actually had to take uh several bags, big bags of trash out of her car and drag them across the parking lot and she was trying to get it up into the um, into the dumpster and my Gary picked them up and helped her with it, but he said the same thing, that nobody ever come out to help her. But he didn't know if they were busy or, you know, what the case might have been. Right, and that's what I'm saying is that, but he did, Gary did want me to um let you know that he heard John's statement and he also uh helped an elderly woman on Saturday with six bags of trash, so that was it for me.
So do you want to spend more time that um Robert Patch can come in and chat with us? Do you guys mind? If, if Robert Patch comes in and chats with us, both transfer station, you know, Gary comes in, we have a conversation. You good, Royce? So you want to do that next Monday?
That's an open day, the stations, you may want to watch what kind of stuff, so ask him what's best for him.
Okay.
I can't remember if they're open until six on Monday, just four. They're closed?
They're closed on Monday.
Oh, that's right, they're closed on Monday, I'm sorry. Still can't get that out of my head.
Do you guys want to um go over, talk about a couple of budgets? While we're waiting to have?
I believe she's supposed, she's supposed to be here for four o'clock, so how long, Bob, do you want to get?
Well, do you want to go back and talk about um the transfer station? Because that's the one that's gonna be, that they questioned. They've given me a list of questions. Uh did you, they gave you a copy of that list, because you were here with me the other night.
I gave, I gave that to this man, isn't that what I gave you?
Yeah. I gave you the wrong copy of that. I think that was, you did? I always say, is that the one? Finalized question, DM, don't need it, yeah.
There's at least one question on there that I've got a question on.
Okay.
This, okay.
Yeah. Let me find my transfer station.
Are you guys still doing your executive session in between?
What?
You had an exec-
I'm in the third session at four.
Oh, at four.
Um, you're also going to discuss wages.
What's budgets? It's not executive, it's budgets.
Where's the line?
Well, we discuss it in Budget Committee, we discuss it in workshops, so we can get the budgets done.
Where's the line on wages? I got one, there's one thing that's right on here, right on your, listed under your powers and duties on this Budget Committee bylaws. And it says discussions involving direct performance, non-performance of town employees and afforded personnel are strictly prohibited.
We're not talking about that, Royce, we're talking about the budget.
Ah, but somehow it seems to work its way in sometimes these days.
Well, so when do we talk about budgets then?
I don't know. Well, you've got what's recommended for a budget on your spreadsheet, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
But as far as getting into detail, I don't, I don't honestly know how far we can go with that.
Well, I don't think we need to get into detail, I mean, I think, we're not gonna get into detail by people. We get into detail by amount of what the request is. I mean, if you calculate their hours and calculate um how many people we have.
Right. I gotta find my spreadsheet, sorry.
You know, I've done it. The Budget Committee's done it. You know, it should be right around sixty-four, sixty-five thousand.
I'm gonna ask how you figure that.
How we figure it, by their rate of pay and the hours that they work.
Mm-hmm, for three people?
For four.
For four?
Mm-hmm.
And figure it so that when it gets busy this summer and we need four people on days when they're only got three in there normally?
There is some give. There's some give with, with sixty-four thousand, well, there's three hundred and sixty-four thousand, if you went to sixty-five thousand.
It's funny, you probably ought to call Jordan in here, because he and I went over it the other day, we're coming up with a number that's seventy-something.
Jordan? Do you have a minute? Can you calculate the transfer station pay of us, come up with what it normally would be for the year?
Do I know what it is, like what, how they have it right now and then? Like, there's two different numbers, like what you said, the sixty-four thousand is with two people working all three days and then, so there's always three people on. So two people with twenty-seven hours a week, two people with eighteen. And then what he said is that's with everybody at twenty-seven hours a week.
For the whole year?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that's not what we would have, so.
So it just came down to?
Yeah, but on Saturday, you have four.
Four, yeah. So if two people work twenty-seven hours a week and two people work eighteen, so there's two people there all three days that are open. And then there's four people there on Saturday, but three people-
Is that why we started to get complaints?
I'm just saying, the hours is, the hours is up to you.
Because there's not enough-
Well, I don't know, maybe that's why we're talking about it. I mean, you know, maybe we need to have them increase, but that's, maybe we need to just tell them, you know, explain that to the Budget Committee more, that's why we're having the conversation. Maybe they need more help, I don't know, we need to talk to the transfer station first, but um that's why the Budget Committee was asking. Because if you calculate the hours they're scheduled to have now, it's only sixty-four, sixty-five thousand, correct? Um and there was a little bit of a buffer, but not much.
Well, then like you said, if everybody works every day, four people every day that are open is-
Yeah, what kind of hours are you gonna be working come May thirtieth?
Yeah, but not everybody can work that, because I know one of the gentlemen up there cannot.
Are you gonna end up putting on more help so that they can, so that people can get help that are asking for it?
I don't know, Royce, that's why, I haven't talked to them yet, but that's what we're talking about.
That's something we need to figure on ahead of time.
All right, well, then we'll wait and we'll talk about, we'll talk to the transfer station first and see how he feels about it.
Right.
He's there, okay. Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks, Jordan.
I just don't want not to fly in the end, we're gonna have to have our ducks in a row and, and explain it well, because if not, it's just not gonna.
Costs money, it runs a transfer station.
I know, I know, it does.
It costs money to pay people.
It does.
And if you've got people now already in the slow time of the year that are not getting service, then we have, then we have that problem going on, I would say.
We'll have a conversation. All right, we're not too long on our little list here. I think the second one's already been corrected. So mowing at the transfer station, they're asking, could this be included in the contract for mowing at the town office? Or could it be done by the highway personnel because they use the facility? It is listed on the highway budget for three hundred and ninety on seven twenty-one sixteen, also on the transfer station budget for five hundred and sixty by advocate along here on eleven thirty sixteen.
Do you want, are you road commissioner, ask him why he thinks about it? Because right now, he pays for one side of the road getting mowed, getting mowed, and the transfer stations get paid for the other side of the road getting mowed.
Oh, well, that's all they're asking.
It's different mowers, you've got, you've got somebody-
They're just asking about the dates where it was split, that's what I was gonna say, pay probably one mowers at once and another mowers again, or however they do it, yeah.
If I might be allowed to finish, I'll say that two different type mowers, one of them that goes along behind the farm tractor, it's a big mower, that, that gets done, I think, only once a year. That's on Tommy's side, the other side of the road is, gets done more than that, because they're mowing more like lawn and keeping, like a gate, down by the gate and all that.
Okay.
Keeping it down close.
Dan, do you have a question?
Yeah, and um part of that conversation at the Budget Committee also was about why, and, and I know Royce answered this, but it was also about why uh one is included in a bid and the other one is not bid out. And, you know, I guess at the time, I didn't hear Royce say it was only done once a year, but that was also part of the conversation is who gets the bid? Or how, how come we never see it come to bid? So that, I just wanted to add that you didn't, that wasn't part of your conversation, but it was part of the conversation at Budget Committee.
Yeah, I don't believe it was brought up the other night, but this, as far as I know, I don't think it's changed anything. The road commissioner just puts it out to bid himself, if he puts it out to bid. As far as, as far, and that would be the town, the road commissioner's office side of the road.
I see, so he doesn't, he doesn't come through the selectman's office to put that out to bid?
Not that I know of.
He just puts it out to bid?
No.
On his own?
What's part of his job? I don't know, you tell me.
I'm not the selectman, Royce. Just saying.
Got two other selectmen here, ask them what they know about it.
Well, I asked them, I didn't even ask you guys, I was just thinking that was part of the conversation, I don't really care.
I don't know, I don't.
Oh, you're on top of everything in town, what's going, goes on with those bids?
With what?
The mowing bid, over there at the road commissioner's office, that one.
He, you know, I'd have to ask, oh, go ahead, Paul.
They won't want the, the transfer station, that's all I know.
Yeah, how's it get done, how's it get done? That's the question, the transfer station does, and also that, that side of Tommy's side gets done too. There's a guy that gets hired, goes up there with a mower, and he-
I didn't know if Tommy had anyone mowing.
We'd have to ask him, we'll have to ask Tommy. It might just be in his budget and he just hires somebody to do it quickly and be done with it once a year. I don't know.
Yeah, if somebody's already there, I, I mean, this was kind of not a whole big deal. It was just a question that I heard thrown around out there and they wanted to know why they're, why it wasn't included in all the rest of the town property bid and how that bid was chosen, you know.
You'd have to look back on the, on the uh transfer station, on your expense report and see if that's paid out there for what, out of that budget it would come out of.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll look both ways and see how that happens.
In other words, one side of the road is treated like a field, the other one's treated like a lawn, and there is a difference there.
And they're talking about, uh, the next question was illegal dumping. Is it possible to have an additional surveillance cameras installed at the gate to provide evidence to prosecute illegal dumpsters? The cost of prosecuting them will cost us more than trying to, really, I mean, I, I know it's awful, but-
You've already got cameras in operation right there where they dump the rubbish.
Yeah.
And the problem is that they come to an open gate, it's not the-
Yeah, I've been working on that gate, aren't we?
I don't know.
Oh, I thought we were working on that gate, but all right, so I'll check.
Well, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be solved this year, I don't think there's enough money in the budget to handle it, right? To put up a proper gate and fence across there. And that's another thing that should be looked at with that transfer budget. Are we gonna put up, make sure there's enough money and dedicated to a, to put enough fence and a gate there? There it is.
Hmm?
I know I speak too low or something, nobody pays much attention sometimes.
What? No, I'm just kidding.
You know, it's discussed, I mean, like you're saying, illegal dumpsters. Have we got an ordinance that covers that?
Well, I, I don't know if you need an ordinance, but I don't even know who would increase it, I mean, we don't have a police department.
You better have a law written.
Well, we're not, we don't have a police department. Yes.
There might be also consideration whether it's just trespassing alongside of the illegal dumping, but also trespassing, uh since it is posted that there's, you know, that these are the hours of the, you know, at the gate, it's posted the hour, so it could be just a, you know, both charges, not just dumping charges, so.
I don't know if anybody's ever actually been prosecuted for it.
Well, I mean, who would prosecute them, we don't, it's not like we have a police department, I mean, that would be the worst part of this.
You'd get state police.
Right.
They don't have time to do it.
You would, you'd just bring it to the, whoever, you know, whoever's you're doing your police work, you would bring the, the photographic evidence to them and they would carry on with the investigation. And it'd be up to you to decide whether or not you would actually want to carry through, how far you want to carry through with the persecution, or you just want to give a guy a fine.
And I know of situations where I've worked for the town in the past where we went out with the town crew, road crew would go out and pick up rubbish off the side of the roads and that still goes on, because of the rubble. And nobody, even if you find stuff in the rubbish, nobody ever really gets prosecuted for it, it's never followed through. So something, some mention here made about putting, having gate keys, there are gate keys.
Are you talking about mowing and sanding?
But you can't, but you can't ask about mowing and sanding, because I was going through that gate about once every ten minutes to unlock and unlock that gate, that's totally foolish.
I know.
And sometimes the solution seems simple, but the only thing we've really got going for us is the cameras over there. I don't know if they're all working over there, I have to go over and check, see if how the system's working, make sure that the, there may be a camera not working correctly or something too.
Okay. You haven't seen Anne come in, have you?
I haven't. Hey, Ben? Did you do what's your favorite? See if Anne, Anne Freeman's outside. See if she should make it.
What'd she look like?
Good man, Ben. Good man.
You know.
Oh, you know.
Thank you.
You look so comfortable back there. I was. Sorry.
Okay. So exactly, is that-
Now, I don't know. There's another thing on that list too about commercial hollows. Who's that? Who's a commercial holler?
Who, a commercial hollerby?
Yeah. It says, in reference to commercial trash hollows, can they be required to take their truckload of trash directly to waste management? Instead of tying up the line and filling the can? Well, don't know. Are they actually commercial hollows? Or is it all private?
Well, if they're making money doing it, they're a commercial holler.
And I know we've had people come in here, hollering in the past, and since I've been on the board, even I've heard them come in and they're all upset and they're complaining about, about trash being hauled in from out of state and like that. But how do you prove such a thing? Somebody want to bring us a movie of it? Show them crossing the state line? Show them where they got it and all that? Then turn it in? Otherwise, how do you, how do you defend, how do you do anything with it?
Yes, Deb?
Actually, we discussed that too. And if you tied your commercial, you know, building refuse anyway, to your local building permit.
Are you talking about building contractors?
Yeah, Bill. I was, I was specifically speaking about building contractors because I know that the other commercial holler that people were talking about, I, I believe he offers the service to the town. So I'm not speaking against him in particular. My problem is with people who are doing jobs from outside of town and building, bringing construction debris in and tossing it in the Lebanon dumpsters.
We need proof of it.
Well, if you tied your dump to your building permit, you would have the proof.
Perhaps.
Period.
If it's in Lebanon, but if it's somebody-
Well, that's the only building permit stuff that should, building stuff that should be going in there. Demolition debris should be going in there from Lebanon. And if they're building, then they should have a building permit.
Are you going to monitor the bridge down in East Rogers, do to see if they bring in anything?
Well, you wouldn't have to, Royce, if they had a building permit.
Excuse me. Let me finish. A road ring Milton, or perhaps even out of San Francisco.
Don't they pay anyways? The building contractors pay for their demolition, sheet rock and shingles and stuff like that.
Correct. Correct. So if you had a question about whether or not the building debris was from in Lebanon or outside of Lebanon, they should have a building permit that they already pay for that privilege with.
What about a private residence? It's doing something that isn't required on, on a permit.
That's a private resident. Different story. I'm talking about a contractor.
What's-
Supposing, supposing someone rips their sheet rock and do a room mow.
Right.
They don't have, they're building-
They're not a contractor either.
They're doing it themselves.
Correct.
So they take it up there, they pay.
Right.
Okay. That happens.
That does.
Right.
She's talking about building contractors.
Thank you, Christine.
Businesses that come in there with, you know, I mean.
You don't know the resident.
Do we get a lot of businesses though? Do, I mean, really, do we get, do, do we get a lot of businesses?
They always said so.
Do we get a lot of businesses that come in and stuff?
Some contractors.
Local contractors? I just didn't know if it was just mostly, you know, in-home stuff or, or, I, I don't know. I've never, don't know.
Yeah, there, there are, I have seen quite a few contractors dumping their stuff there. I've never seen any of them use the pay section, because a lot of times the guys are just like, you know, would tell us that, you know, that, you know, well, I'm talking about, you know, I was dumping off some stuff from a small construction project at home, you know, one bag, basically. They just tell me, throw it in the bin, you know, throw it in the bin because that way the town doesn't pay extra for it. Because we pay extra if we throw it in the, the pay bin. And, you know, and then they all, you know, so it's, it would be the duty of the transfer station employees to ask the questions, to direct them to the appropriate place, collect the fees as needed, you know, and, you know, that's, and they, they can't be doing, you know, Mr. Nice Guy stuff.
No. If, if you've got just a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit is fine.
Right.
Let me finish.
Yeah.
We'll let you do, put it with the garbage.
Yeah.
In a package because it's much costlier across the waste to get rid of it.
Right. Right. Like I said, but if they collect the fees, then that's a wash, you know, you know. In town, people know that, you know, well, if I'm dumping off, you know, household, you know, construction, wet, be a little bit of drywall, whatever, a bag of drywall, you charge an appropriate amount. They know they're supposed to be paying extra for that dump, you know, that, that type of garbage. So they know ahead of time, then, you know, they, you know, they know, you know, there shouldn't be a problem. I mean.
Some contractors are not town residents. So some contractors are not paying taxes as a resident would be if I was stripping out my room or something like that. So that would be hard for them. Could argue the fact that, well, some are, but they're still making a profit off doing the job. So that is the difference. I think Deborah, and not just Deborah, but I think it was you that initiated it in the budget committee, was on to something. Don't know what the right answer just yet is. But when somebody applies for a building permit, even a homeowner, you could come up with a different transfer station sticker. Like, you know, hate to say it, something, I don't know what the answer is, but like a punch card or whatever it is. Yeah, somebody up there is going to have to do their job, go outside and inspect and watch what's going in. But it would allow a contractor to pay for that when they got the building permit. And then you're also getting paid for it. Because truth of matter, Paul, I'm going to ask you now, what are we charging? When a contractor comes up there, oh, wait a minute, I'm going to address my whole board. I'm sorry. I'll wait. As soon as Royce comes back.
I'm just gonna, well, whatever.
I know you have an executive session.
But I would like to really see in the future, I'd like to see maybe like a little shack down below, like, as you're going to drive up and somebody in that shack that stops and said, okay, this trash goes there, that trash goes there, and you owe me five bucks, or whatever it is. Your sticker's good. If they don't have one, put one on there. That's really what I'd like to see with a gate and like a little shed down there so people know where they're going when they get in there.
I don't know if he's coming back, but I mean, Paul, what do we charge? When someone comes up there and dumps a dump truck load, what are we charging? A contractor comes in. I know what the answer is. So I mean, what is it?
Pickup load, you know, for example, roofing tiles.
Yeah.
It's seventy-five dollars for pickup load. A long truck.
How much do you think that weighs in that truck? I mean, that's some of the questions you need to look at. Because I mean, we all have a pretty good idea. You know, we live rural. And what does it cost us to get rid of it for waste management? According to the contract, a hundred and ten dollars a ton. So you're really, are we covering our costs? It's something that needs to be looked at.
I don't think they-
I don't think you are.
A hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty-nine?
If you're talking instead of five, you're not getting that from a roof tiles or, and again, if the guy's a contractor, he's going to be bringing it in in either, you know, garbage bins, or he's going to be bringing them in a black, in the big black bags. The guy comes up, pulls up, five big black bags, you know, it should be a, you know, a little red flag to say, hey, we need to pay attention to this guy, you know?
Which is where you would hit him at codes.
Right. Or, or, and then, like I said, also, you know, keep, you know, plate number, if you have to jot down a plate number, then jot down a plate number, you know, for, you know, to catch up on the guys that are doing it repeatedly, you know?
I'll just finish too. This is an Lebanon problem. I mean, trash and waste management, everybody's issue. We're, you know, it's a problem.
Just look over. Didn't see her yet. Dan's coming in.
That phone call, Teresa's been accepted.
Is it Tony?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Oh, Dan's here.
TH.
It is TH?
There's still a current prices of increased level. Has this been changed from last year?
No, that's not correct on there. Just saying, it's not correct on there.
It's not?
You know, compared to the other towns, are prices reasonable?
Yeah, but that's what I think part of the problem is, is that we're paying more than we're taking in for people who are making money off of bringing stuff to our dump, you know? And that's what the problem is. Not that people, residents should have to pay more, but the contractors should have to pay at least what we're putting out on their behalf, Paul.
We don't have that many contracts.
What's not, what's not correct, Royce?
Uh, I want to tell you. Hold on, because we looked at it the other day. It was, um...
As far as I know, that's the latest sheet out. That's the one that's like on the front counter over here.
And other towns-
Oh, this is a newer one.
Yeah.
This is, yeah, good.
You want me to keep that if you'd like?
Thank you.
Other towns are changing to other things. I mean, other towns now have pay per bag. Other towns have buy your sticker. You know, in the future, probably we're going to have to go down that road unfortunately because of the cost of, um, trash at the transfer station. So I mean, that's what-
And I can see that, I can see that discussion, Christine. But right now, I don't think with taxpayer appropriations, I don't think we're in that position.
I mean, it will be the future.
But if you look at how much we're paying per ton for the demolition debris versus what the contractors are paying to dump it, I think there's a huge discrepancy there. So that was my only.
So I'll make the motion if you want to make the session.
So we'll make it on, Royce made a motion. I've got to go and make the session.
Four?
Four oh five six eight.
Personnel issues? Christine?
Yes.
Thank you.